Matt, will you pull up the... Matt, will you pull up the presentation and then we'll open...start the meeting once that's up?
Yeah.
And...
Can you have the planning commission fly on full screen?
Great, and let me...first I need to adjust one thing on my end.
So Matt, I'll be able to give the presentation when it's my turn?
Yeah, so I'll just...I'll stop sharing and you'll start sharing when it's open.
Okay.
And then when you're done, I ask Gabe to sit down after you, so I'll put that back up. You're done?
Okay, so we're at seven o'clock. We're good to go, right?
Almost. Okay. You ready?
Ready. Okay. So it's seven o'clock and I'd like to call the Capitol Planning Commission meeting to order on February 4th. Hello and welcome to the Planning Commission meeting tonight. In accordance with the current Santa Cruz County health order and the governor's executive order, this meeting is not physically open to the public. Hopefully it will be soon. Commissioners and staff are meeting...
Matt, will you pull up the, Matt, will you pull up the presentation and then we'll open, start the meeting once that's up?
Yeah.
Um, and
Planning Commission's applying full screen.
Great. And let me, first I need to adjust one thing on my end.
So Matt, I'll be able to give the presentation when it's my turn?
Yeah, so I'll just, I'll stop sharing and you'll start sharing.
Okay.
And then when you're done, I ask Katie's presentation until it's done after you.
Okay, so we're at seven o'clock. We're good to go, right?
Almost. Okay. You ready?
Ready. Okay. So it's seven o'clock and I'd like to call the Capitola Planning Commission meeting to order on February fourth. Hello and welcome to the Planning Commission meeting tonight. In accordance with the current Santa Cruz County Health Order and the Governor's Executive Order, this meeting is not physically open to the public. Hopefully it will be soon. Commissioners and staff are meeting via Zoom and there are several ways for the public to watch and participate. Information on how to join the meeting using Zoom or landline mobile phone along with how to submit public comment during the meeting tonight is available on our website. And maybe if we could show that screen on the, on the Zoom screen. City of Capitola.org. Okay, and the slide now shown gives you the instructions on how to participate. As always, this meeting is cable cast live on Charter Communication Cable TV Channel eight and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. It's being recorded to be replayed on the following Monday and Friday at 1:00 p.m. on Charter, Charter Channel 71 and Comcast Channel 25. Meetings can also be viewed live from the city's website. And our tech mission tonight is Walter Juan Stray. So with that, may we have the roll call please? Clerk, Ms. Clerk?
Sure. Commissioner Christensen?
Here.
Commissioner Newman?
Here.
Commissioner Westman?
Here.
Commissioner Wilk?
Here.
Chair Ruth?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And now we'll have the pledge of allegiance. Ready? The pledge of allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America. Does it republish it or does it stand in one nation?
One nation.
For God's deliver people and justice for all. You and I were right on it. Okay, first item on the agenda is oral communications. Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda meeting?
No additions or deletions.
Okay, thank you. Public comments. This is the time for any member of the public to bring any issue before the Planning Commission that's not currently on the agenda. And you are requested to follow the instructions to contact the Planning Commission. And we'll wait a minute or two to see if we have any communications from the public.
Chair Ruth, I do not see any public comments within our email system. I'm now going to check Zoom. It looks like we have three attendees this evening and none are raising their hand in Zoom for public comments. So no public comment this evening.
Okay, well, welcome to the three attendees. And that brings us to commission comments. Are there any commissioners that have any comments at this time? Courtney? No, no. Okay. Okay, hearing none. Any comments from the staff?
No comments this evening. I will have a director's report later.
Okay, thank you, Kay. Okay, just a reminder to identify yourself when you speak, so Edna can get that into the minutes properly. So that brings us to the public hearings. Tonight we have two public hearings. First, we'll have a staff presentation, public discussion if we have any planning commission elements, and then we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion and the decision. So the first item tonight is 1855 41st Avenue, and this is the mall. And it's for a conditional use permit for mobile food vendors located within the cigar commercial zoning district. It's not in the coastal zone, doesn't require coastal development permit. And the representative is the Malone-Geyer management. So we have a staff presentation, please.
Thank you, Chair Ruth, commissioners. Tonight we have before you a conditional use permit request for mobile food vending at Capitola Mall as mentioned. The proposal includes all of the parcels that make up the Capitola Mall and the surrounding parking lot areas that are owned by Malone-Geyer Partners. Those are the ones shown here at Yale. On Wednesday, January 20th, 2021, staff sent a courtesy letter to the management of Capitola Mall informing them that the mobile food vendors currently operating in the mall parking lot along 41st Avenue provide use permits to the city of Capitola. The manager of the Capitola Mall subsequently informed the two mobile food vendors, Akizas Gabrielle and Soffies, they would not be able to operate in the parking lot and sell with the proper permits for a change. I took these photos. Several could see what was there at the time. So under the Capitola District Code, mobile food vending may be permitted within the administrative temporary use permit or a discretionary conditional use permit. Under a temporary use permit, mobile vendors can operate in one location four times or less per year. Under a conditional use permit, one or more mobile food vendors may operate in one location more than four times per year. Mobile food vending is increasingly being recognized as a community economic development tool. Food trucks and trailers provide opportunities for entrepreneurs and small businesses. And it can add interest, vibrancy, and activity to street skates and sites and can expand food access in areas otherwise underserved by traditional restaurants. Take some colorful examples for you here. So the applicant is applying for a conditional use permit to allow up to three mobile food vendors to operate seven days a week from 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. That's given us proposing four sites to the food vending locations, including along 41st Avenue north of the main eastern mall entrance, along the north, and along the north side of the entrance driveway, which is shown here in red. Just for every different in this image here, 41st Avenue is on the right, Capitola Road is on the bottom, and Claire Street, which is around the backside of the mall, is on the left and on the top. So then they also have along 41st Avenue, south of the main eastern mall entrance, and along the south side of that entrance driveway, which is shown here in blue. And then along Capitola Road, between the main southern mall entrance and the Bank of America parcel, which is shown here in green. And then along Claire Street, south of the main western mall entrance, shown here in purple, adjacent to the food court. The purpose, stated purpose from the applicant for requesting four sites and staff, the ability to move a food vendor location during special events and during the potential future redevelopment of the mall to accommodate construction. The proposal does not include heating or special lighting, and individual mobile food vendors will be required to have onsite trash and recycling to be disposed of within the mall wreckage disposal area. When evaluating a conditional use permit application, planning commission is required to consider several characteristics of the proposed use. The first one is operating characteristics, including hours of operation, traffic generation, lighting, noise, odor, dust, and other external effects. The hours of operation are comparable with commercial uses on the adjacent parcels. Proposed locations are in underutilized portions of the mall parking lots. Minimal traffic generation and parking impacts are projected. Lighting is limited to existing exterior lighting on vendor vehicles and trailers. And there's no projected noise, odor, dust, or other external impacts. Just to make sure of the things that we previously went over, staff would have a additional condition of approval to mitigate any potential future issues. The first one is separation from vehicular traffic. This is similar to what we're doing with the temporary COVID permit seen around town where businesses are utilizing parking spaces and parking lots and to keep two diners safe from vehicular traffic wrapping teams, put up stanchions and ropes. So we included a condition of approval that they provide physical barrier between the vehicular right way and the customer queue, that's condition 13. In addition, the vendor, mobile food vendor comply with sign standards. This one is included because the people who were operating prior to this application had those flag signs and sandwich board signs to make sure that they were aware that those were prohibited on sign sites. And that condition number 14 also limits signage on city vendor vehicle and on the trailer. We also leave conditions by ADA access requirements, sections of fire lanes, preservation of onsite circulation, customer parking, wreckage collection and disposal, and operations allowed speakers down the information. The second consideration is the availability of adequate public services and infrastructure. The proposed users will not derive any permanent infrastructure, and the proposed location has readily available public services. The one exception is public restrooms, because the nearest available restroom at the mall are the restaurants located in Capitola Mall food court. However, the mobile food vendors as proposed are essentially takeout restaurants with no seating allowed, which means there needs to be another type of customers that would be on site. The third consideration is potential effects to natural environment, because this is in an existing mall parking lot with a busy commercial corridor, there would have impact to the natural environment. And then the last consideration is the physical suitability of sites for the proposed use in terms of design, location, operating characteristics, shape, size, and topography. The use being proposed is as a way for an underutilized area or multiple underutilized areas at the outer edge of the Capitola Mall parking lot. The operating characteristics of the mobile food vendors are complementary to the retail restaurant use in the Capitola Mall and on the adjacent parcels. And parking lot is large and generally flat in terms of property. So that, staff recommends planning commission review and approve Project Application 21-0023 based on the conditions and times for approval.
Okay, thank you, Matt.
You're welcome.
Any questions for staff? I have a question. Commissioner Wilk?
Thank you, Chair Ruth. Yeah, a couple of questions. First of all, you mentioned the stanchion being basically a COVID precaution. I was just wondering if there are any other COVID precautions that we've imposed on any of the village businesses or anything that might, we might want to apply here as well? Should we consider that?
Most of the ones that had to do with seating and the seating was something they were not proposing at this time. I did, I did have some pretty long discussions with some about, you know, the potential to add seating, but they decided to just not go forward with that right now. So that's just the one sort of similar thing that I thought might be applicable and, you know, in terms of safety was the stanchion to provide that separation between vehicle traffic.
Because outside, we wouldn't want, we wouldn't need any like signs that says six feet distances or masks or anything like that.
I don't think we actually have that, I don't think we actually have that type of requirement for our COVID permit. Unless Community Development Director Hurley, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I believe that's more of the county and then I think the city itself is taking it and finds itself to place a lot of that signage around town.
Okay. Then my second question is with regards to biodegradable containers. I know Mayor Burle has mentioned several times in the past at the city council meetings about wanting her to report on our policy on plastic bags, plastic straws, disposable containers and whatnot. I don't know that she's ever been given satisfaction, but I know we've addressed that same issue a lot on the commission of the environment. So my question to you, I guess, is you, I brought this up to you before the meeting. So you were able to pull together a potential condition that would reiterate our municipal code and maybe we would want to put that into into our condition.
I think I drafted a condition related to having mobile food vendors comply with the biodegradable and compostable disposable food service wear requirements in the Capitola District. So I have that ready if you would like to have that.
So the reason I bring that up is because I would, I would like the rest of commissioners to consider that, because I don't know whether I would want that condition in there, but I know it's something that is very dear to the hearts of a lot of people, especially on the commission, on the environment. You know, we're not, we're not generally imposing that on Burger King or McDonald's, you know, who have plastic straws and all this kind of stuff. But, you know, some of our other vendors like Yales and whatnot have been very good about trying to comply with that requirement. So I'm just wondering if the commission would be interested in imposing that on the, on the food vendors. So I'll leave that for a discussion later. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for staff?
I have one question.
Susan, just like a self for the minutes, please.
This is Susan, question. In our materials that we were provided, the mall gave us an exhibit B, which indicated where they plan to have these mobile food trucks in the parking lot. And I didn't see any condition that referenced that. So I wondered if we wanted to add a condition that says that the food trucks will be located, you know, as shown on exhibit B provided by the mall, so there's no confusion later on about where they can or can't be.
Yes, you can add that condition.
And uncomfortable. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Susan. Mr. Newman, Christensen, any more comments?
I did. I had a question.
Okay. Mayor Newman?
Can, can Matt remind me of what the mechanism is for enforcing the conditions of operation that we're imposing, such as not using sound, complying with signage and so forth? I mean, I think this kind of a use can be very beneficial and can also very easily deteriorate into a, well, as soon as they leave, we do what we want to do.
Well, in general, in the past, when we've had violations of conditions of approval, we have treated it like a normal COVID enforcement case. But with the extra weight of being able to hold the permit if, you know, the noncompliance continues. So it's kind of an extra layer, not just the fines, but they can also get the permit revoked for, not just them, but for everyone.
I'm thinking of several examples, not of food vendors, but of other violators in our community. It's been a long process to try to get them into compliance. I don't know if there's any better lever that we can build in so that it's not just an ongoing six-month process that it will have someone actually remove a sign that they're not supposed to have.
Did you have a specific enforcement mechanism in mind or?
No, that's why I meant.
Okay, just making sure.
Commissioner Newman? We
I don't think there's enough motivation for people to comply.
So currently we follow the standard protocol that is outlined in the municipal code. And depending on the type of violation, we'll follow the standards within the municipal code for following up with a violation. When it comes to conditional use permits, there's the ability for staff to bring it back to the planning commission if there's a violation. So to review the conditional use permit, it's specifically outlined in the zoning code that we have, you have that authority. So if there are any businesses that are not complying that you have concerns with, we, you can always reach out to me and I can, we can look into the violation and see if it's severe enough to take it back to the planning commission. This has come up recently with a business that was not following their permit. So happy to review those as they come along. One suggestion that I would make for this current application is if the planning commission would like, you know, we have not approved mobile vendors in the past for an ongoing amount of time. And there is precedent set within conditional use permits when it's something new to require the permit to come back in about a year for a review and see how things are going. So if the planning commission wanted to set a timeframe or maybe just after the end of summer, just to review, get an update from staff on how things are going, and then during that review, if there were any issues that were raised, we could address them at that time.
I think a six-month review would be good in this situation.
I would agree.
Yeah.
Okay. Courtney, do you have other comments?
No, I thought was, I think that, that kind of summarized what I was thinking was the time, a timeframe to just review. Everything seems like a good idea.
Okay, thank you. Katie, I have, I have a couple of questions. On the, on the barriers, are there any criteria for those barriers? Of what they should look like or what they're made of? I don't want to see a pile of sandbags out there or a bunch of pallets stacked up. So what kind of controls do we have on that?
I'm going to look to Matt if there was any design controls on that, but we, we could modify if there's not, we could add a condition that I, I would have to review the design of the stanchions to make sure that, you know, just the community development director signs off on them. That, that's what we've been utilizing with our outdoor dining due to COVID. And we've gotten some great improvements from projects that have come in and we've asked for just a little bit more to make it really fit within the community. So.
Okay.
Matt, were there
Condition also. Just one more question. On the, the two areas that are L-shaped along Capitola Road and the main entrance, is, does that allow them to set up anywhere along that area? I presume it does. And are, are there any designated parking spaces for customers?
They did not indicate that in their plan. There we go. So they just, they just said that they can operate anywhere within these areas. So the rest of, all the rest of the parking you see that's on their parcel would be the, would be the customer parking.
Okay. But they're not specifically designated, like, they can't, they can't say this parking is only for our specific use?
That was not included in their proposal, but as far as I know, the mall has not, has not, you know, dedicated parcels to this specific use. My assumption is that they think there's no parking where there won't be, you know, conflicts over this.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Matt. I have no other questions. So with that, if there's no other questions from the commissioners, we'll open the public hearing, and if you could put the instructions up, Matt, on how to participate. We'll wait a minute or two and see if we get any comments on this, and then we'll bring it back to the Commission.
The manager of the mall, Brian Kirk, is present if the Planning Commission has questions.
Mr. Kirk, is there anything you'd like to add?
I'll unmute him now.
Can you guys hear it?
Yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to add in also in regards to the concerns for any violations or continued violations that any of these vehicles that would be here on site will be also under an agreement with us that they need to follow. So I would anticipate anything going to that level where we wouldn't adjust ourselves before we, we were going to have them threatened by such a situation.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, there is none. Do we have any other comments coming in? Katie?
No additional comments from our panelists. I'm going to check our public comment email, and that, there's no public comment on the email either, so. No public comments this evening.
We'll bring it back to the Commission for any discussion or motion. What's the pleasure?
So I, I'd like to discuss this a little bit. This is Commissioner Wilk. So we've all, we've all proposed different amendments or conditions, I should say, and I think we should probably go over them to make sure that we're all in agreement. The first one, which I brought up, which I myself brought up, but I'm not necessarily agreeing with, was the notion of imposing our environmental requirements, our biodegradable plastic requirements. We could have Matt read the, read the amendment, but if, if, if I, if there's nobody else who thinks this is a big deal, I don't even want to pursue it. So I'd be, I'd be curious to know if any other commissioners would want to go down this path.
I'll speak then, for now. I think it's, I think it's a good policy. I think the better way to advance that policy would be for the City Council to do it for all businesses rather than for us to do it just the ones that come through for permits.
Yeah.
Well, but it's already, it's already a law, right? It's already an order that there, everyone is supposed to comply, and so there's really nothing more that needs to be done in terms of, you know, requirements or ordinances. It's just a question of enforcement. And by putting it in as a condition, that would be, hey, we're serious about this, let's enforce it.
So just comply with the existing laws in that regard would be the condition.
Yeah, but, but to your point, this is, this kind of thing had plenty of opportunity to come up in front of the City Council as well, and they had, other than Mayor Brooks occasionally asking for, hey, what's going on, there hasn't been a whole lot of, hey, let's enforce this, coming from the City Council either. So, I don't know, maybe we would want to do it more from a grassroots standpoint, you know, kind of bring it to their attention. Maybe that a applicant would want to appeal to them, and then we would really have this issue on the table and see how we're going to enforce it. Or maybe just, you know, it should be a stick in the mud or a, you know, a ravel rouse or so. We want them to do this unless everybody else thinks that this is a, if this is a cause worth pursuing.
I, I, well, this, Commissioner Christensen, I, I totally agree with Commissioner Wilk. He, I, I think that it's pretty observable over this whole COVID experience that the disposables have been, you know, up significantly. It's, it's just everything is put into disposable containers and there's no real, I, I don't feel that there's a huge regard for the biodegradable kind. So I, I would agree with Commissioner Wilk.
Yeah, it, it appears we already have a municipal code that states this requirement. So if we just kind of reiterate that in the conditions, I don't think we're imposing anything unusual on it.
This is Associate Planner, Matt Robach. So staff used that same rationale with the sign code actually in the conditions of approval, where, you know, the sign code is already there, but the idea would be that, you know, the mall owners, when they do these rental agreements with the food vendors, would hand them this list of conditions so that they have something concise with all of the rules they have to follow, because for the most part, people don't just, they're not very familiar with the municipal code. So it's nice to have something for new businesses in one place for them to look at when they start operating.
Okay, so we have the additional condition on the screen, so when we get to making a motion, someone who makes the motion can either include that or not include that. Another proposed condition was a review in six months of the conditional use permit. So we'll address that in the motion, and I think we can leave it up to staff to review the, the type of barrier that's proposed. So is anyone willing to propose a motion?
There's actually one more, actually. Commissioner Westman's condition about referencing the site plan with the food vendor location. That was the fourth modification.
Oh, correct. Okay, thank you, Matt, for that. Okay, is there a motion?
I'll, I'll take a shot at a motion, this is Commissioner Wilk. I move stack recommendations with the additional condition of, maybe, dating municipal code 8.36.040 to mention biodegradable and compostable food products, containers, to change the conditional use permit time limit from existing 24 months to six months, and finally to add a condition to include the site plan additions or attachments as part of the condition.
If Commissioner Wilk, that would be a review in six months?
A review in six months.
Okay, thank you. There are seconds to the motion.
I'll second that. Commissioner Christian.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? There is none. May the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Commissioner Christensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Newman?
Aye.
Commissioner Westman?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilk?
Aye.
And Chair Ruth?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to Item B tonight, which is a study session to introduce objective standards for mixed use and multifamily developments, brought to us by the state who's trying to usurp our, usurp our zoning ordinance. So these will be standards that will be applicable to all the zoning districts which allow multifamily and mixed use development, and this is going to be just a study session tonight, no action is required, and the presentation will be, first, Katie, you're going to do the introduction?
Yes, I'm pretty sure that you've, you're all very familiar with Ben Noble, Ben Noble Planning. Ben is, has, we've contracted Ben to work on our SB 2 grant, which includes new objective standards for our zoning code. The timing of this should be perfect. The Coastal Commission will be reviewing our LCP update either in March or April, and we'll be headed right into another zoning code update with objective design standards. Hopefully, we're looking for adoption, I think. Ben will have the timing of this in his slides, but probably towards the fall. So Ben's well-versed in Capitola, in Capitola. He worked on our general plan update as well as, since the, since I've been here the past seven and a half years, I've been working closely with Ben on the zoning code update as well. So he's got longer consistency with Capitola than I do or any of the planners in the planning department. So, Ben, it's great to have you here and working on a new project with us. Welcome.
Okay, Ben. Thank you.
So I will, I will endeavor to share my screen, and I have a presentation. Yeah. Does everybody see the title slide of the presentation?
Yeah.
Great. So, good evening. It's great to see familiar faces and some new faces as well. As Katie said, I'm Ben Noble, and I have a long history of working in Capitola. I think it was 2006, maybe, when we first started talking about the general plan update. I was at that time with the firm DC&amp;E, and we worked on the general plan update and the zoning code update. And about seven years ago, I left DC&amp;E to start my own firm and have been working with Katie over the last seven years to complete the zoning code update. And I've also been helping with, working with Katie and Coastal Commission staff to try to get the Coastal Commission certification over the finish line for the new zoning code. So I'm really happy to be able to continue working on this particular project and looking forward to our conversation tonight. So as Katie mentioned, tonight's a study session, and if the Commission and the chair is comfortable with this, I would encourage you to interrupt me with questions as we go through, so we can keep this, you know, a little more casual, a little less formal, and have a productive conversation about all of these things. So here's an overview of the presentation. It's going to mirror, originally was in the staff report, with a little additional information. So I'm going to begin briefly reviewing the project background, and then talking about the recent state law that's most relevant to this project and, in a lot of ways, is motivating the city to do this. I'll then review the existing regulations that apply to multifamily and mixed use development, and then present our recommended approach for preparing the new objective standards for multifamily and mixed use development. So this project originates with a grant from the state of California. It's called the SB 2 Grant Program, and the purpose of this program is focused on local planning to facilitate, to facilitate housing production. And the city of Capitola decided to use these grant funds in part to prepare new objective standards for multifamily and mixed use development. And the purpose of these standards is to help protect the city, given recent changes, changes to state law, and to help ensure that new development, when it comes, is high quality in light of these new state housing laws.
And can I ask you about that, Staff?
Sure.
So if I may ask you some questions about the economics of this. We know, what was the scope of the grant? How much was the grant? And how much is being allocated to this particular project? Katie, would you like to answer that?
The grant in its entirety was for $160,000. The majority of the funds are going towards ADU development, so we're going to be putting out some guidance documents, updating a website, webpage for ADU guidance, as well as adopting maybe four to five designs that would work within Capitola, so hiring an outside consultant to actually design prototypes for the city that would work with, where it will study our different lot sizes and make sure that they would work within the existing setback standards that we have. So exciting project there. So forty, I think it's 45,000 towards the objective design standards, and the remainder of the 100, it's about 115 minus some administrative costs, going towards that ADU prototypes and guidance documents.
Forty-five thousand to this project and 115 to the ADU project?
Correct.
And they have to use those funds for some type of housing development project?
They, the funds have to be utilized towards a project that will expedite housing production.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, I have a question along that regard. Reading the staff report, SB 35, it said it doesn't pertain to areas that are within the coastal zone. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Projects within the coastal zone are not eligible for SB 35.
So we're just talking about a small area that's outside the coastal zone then when it comes to this, correct?
Just for SB 35, but there's Housing Accountability Act and SB 330 considerations as well that apply citywide.
Streamlining, citywide?
Well, it depends how you define streamline. I, I will get into a little bit more into that.
Okay. Okay.
I, I was going to that same kind of thought process, because the conditions for qualifying for these new standards, if I understand them correctly, and I know I'm jumping ahead here, but they have to have 50% low or moderate income housing, and you have to comply with prevailing wage rates in the construction of the project. And I think that it'd be nice to have these things theoretically, but nobody, in my, to my knowledge, nobody has ever built anything in Capitola complying with prevailing wage rates, because it's much more expensive. And to do that for a project that has 50% low-income housing makes it completely infeasible. So what do we gain?
Does nobody have this whole thing to move?
Well, it's not, nobody's ever going to implement it.
There are three, I think.
Have you looked at the difference between construction costs in Capitola with prevailing wage rate and without?
I think that there have been some pervasive wage housing projects done in Capitola. I believe the project on Bay Avenue that got bought from Salvation Army and redone, where the added units and diverted, that was a prevailing wage project.
Yeah, but that was not a pre-market project. I mean, that was a subsidized housing project.
Right.
So I'm just saying, I mean, I, I just point that out. Other than that, if you can show me any private developer that ever complied with that, let alone doing it with 50% low-income housing, I'd be surprised.
But don't you think there are some low-income housing developers around? Trying to think of the name of some of them who just would apply to one of their projects?
You mean charitable organizations or subsidized organizations?
I mean, I, I don't, I don't see it as being impossible, probably.
We do it. I'm just, I'm putting out that it's kind of a hypothetical exercise.
So I can report that I'm seeing more SB 35 applications in cities that have lower land values than Capitola. I think we first, we first saw, we saw the first SB 35 applications come in, in cities like San Francisco, Berkeley, Palo Alto, with very high land values and high housing costs. In the last year or so, I've started to see more. In the last year or so, I've started to see more coming in from cities that have lower cost housing, lower land values, which, which suggests to me that in cities like Capitola, as affordable housing developers are putting together financing projects, that it is making meeting, it is, it is making meeting affordability and labor provision requirements feasible. But I would point out that this is not just about SB 35. This is about the sort of larger context of state housing law and also the direction that state housing law is going in the future in terms of increased reliance on ministerial approvals and limitations on reliance on discretionary regulations.
So Ben, our, this is Chairman Bruce, are we trying to apply SB 35 regulations to the entire city to try to meet the HHA, HAA requirements?
No, no. And I, if it's okay, I would, I would, I would suggest that I sort of walk through the, the legal basis in a somewhat more systematic way and it may answer some of these questions if that is okay.
Okay, commission. Okay, we'll try to do that so we don't get too mired down.
Okay.
And if I, if I may, Ben, sorry. At the city of Santa Cruz, I believe they have one pre-application in for SB 35. So if they're seeing them currently as a pre-app, I think they could come our way as well. Thank you.
And so just briefly, the process and schedule, Katie and I have approached this in a relatively streamlined manner. We begin with a review of the existing regulations, regulations and a recommended approach, which we aim to conclude next month. And then based on that feedback, we begin the process of looking at what objective standards we want to prepare, working with stakeholders to prepare them and then have a public review, draft of these standards done in the late summer, early fall and begin the process of working with the planning commission to receive feedback on this and the review and adoption process with the city council, aiming to have this wrapped up by October of 2021. And in terms of public engagement, so we'll be working with the planning commission and the city council to formulate a recommended approach as well as the drafting and finalization of the standards themselves. We also tend to work with a group of stakeholders, so that might be local architects, builders, property owners, residents who are particularly interested in the future of the community to work with them on developing some of the details of the standard as well as formal planning commission, city council, public hearings for the review and adoption of standards. So I'll spend a little bit more time talking about the state law, which is prompting the city's interest in pursuing this project. The most important ones are SB 35, the Housing Accountability Act and SB 330 and State Housing Element Law in particular, the, particularly the regional housing needs allocation requirement. So as described in the memo that was included in the staff report, SB 35 was adopted in 2017 and what this law essentially requires is that for any city that's not meeting its regional housing needs allocation target, that they need to approve, or they must review qualifying multi-family projects through a streamlined ministerial process. And a qualifying project means that the multi-family project, it could be mixed use as well with a certain percentage of the project needing to be multi-family. It also needs to be, have a certain percentage of affordable units and right now for Capitola, that 50%, that that number can shift depending on Capitola's status of needing its arena for different affordability levels.
Excuse me, Ben, just a quickie. Do ADUs apply to the HAA?
Not to, not to SB 35. One, one can make the argument that a new single family home with an ADU is subject to the Housing Accountability Act, but I've, I've heard from different lawyers, different interpretations of that.
A question, this is Commissioner Wilk. Is this a supply to new builds only or would a remodel of an existing apartment building qualify for this?
If an existing building, if new, if new multi-family units were added, that would be, that, that could be, that project could request streamlined approval under SB 35.
So an existing large, single family home that someone decided to convert into four units would be, would qualify under this?
Well, they could request streamlined approval if they need to require it.
Thank you.
And so a part, an important part of SB 35 is that if an applicant requests streamlined approval and if, if it's a qualifying project, so meaning it meets the affordability requirement and the prevailing wage requirement, which is sort of the biggest of the requirements, they would submit an application requesting SB 35 streamlined review. And if the project is consistent with all applicable objective standards, the city must approve it and cannot subject the project to a discretionary public review process. And the city needs to do it within a specified timeframe, which for projects less than 150 units, I think it has to be within nine days. And so one thing about SB 35 is that it does not apply within the coastal zone. So a project proposed within the coastal zone cannot request streamlined review under SB 35. So any, any, oh, I have another slide here. So state law provides a definition of an objective standard. It's on the screen here. So there can't be any personal or subjective judgment. It needs to be uniformly verifiable by an external benchmark and it needs to be knowable to the applicant and the city officials prior to submission. So an example of an objective standard is a maximum height, 30 feet. It's very easy for everybody to know what that rule is and it involves no personal or subjective judgment to the most part to determine if a project complies with it. An example of a standard that is not objective is something along the lines of the project must, the height of the project must be compatible with the existing character of the surrounding area. That's very clearly not an objective standard. So if a project was requesting streamlined review under SB 35, the city would not be able to require compliance with that subjective requirement. The city would only be able to require compliance with objective standards. Okay.
So a question.
Yeah.
So subjective standard, so you mentioned SB 35 is not coastal zone, but you also mentioned that if there is a larger goal here, which is like be consistent with the state, I don't know, HAA or whatever, that says, you know, we, we want to get rid of subjective requirements, we want to have objective requirements. And so is the, is the move here to, to push changing our code to give, basically just unilaterally get rid of these subjective things, not just, not just outside the coastal zone, but across the board in order to be consistent with the intent that the state wishes?
Well, you know, I think that the state has its own agenda that you're familiar with, with all of its housing laws that it's passed in recent years. I think the, the city of Capitola's objective is to make sure that sufficient objective standards are in place to protect the city and make sure that quality development occurs in Capitola in the future. So in a, to a certain extent, it's sort of a, it's a, it's a defensive response to the state coming in and saying that cities, you can't rely on subjective requirements as much as you used to be able to.
So, I have a question. So the Housing Accountability Act applies to all of Capitola, even in the coastal zone.
Correct.
And the main thing that that says is that the city cannot reduce the density of a project that's proposed based on standards that are not objective. So we have to have the objective standards to defend ourselves with the Housing Accountability Act?
Yeah, you know, my, my experience on these state housing laws recently is that the Housing Accountability Act and SB 330 has been coming into play more than SB 35. It's become more of an issue in how cities are reviewing and approving housing projects. The SB 35 projects are a very small percentage of applications that cities see and some cities may see no SB 35 projects. Capitola may see no SB 35 projects in the near future. But Capitola does need to think about how the Housing Accountability Act might constrain the city when reviewing and acting on a proposed housing project. And there are a lot of questions about what the Housing Accountability Act and SB 330 requires of cities. And the city of Capitola is very fortunate to have good legal counsel on this and the reality is that a lot of the issues haven't been litigated yet. So there are outstanding questions and different interpretations about the extent to which cities can require compliance with existing subjective requirements. I think that, that Capitola City Attorney is advising us that the city, the city can continue to require compliance with subjective requirements through sort of a creative approach, addressing it through conditions of approval, being sort of legally defensible, at least the way the law is interpreted right now. But, but there's, there's a gray area and there are differences, differences of opinion about the extent to which cities can continue to require compliance with subjective requirements as part of a housing review and approval project. But I think what everybody agrees on is that cities cannot reduce the density of a proposed project or deny a project unless it makes these two findings that are on the screen here. And these two findings are really hard to make. And, and I think the city's reason for moving forward on these objective standards is that by having more robust objective standards to use when reviewing proposed housing projects, that it puts the city in a more defensible position when, when considering multi-family housing projects, given in part for the gray area of what the Housing Accountability Act actually requires.
So a multi-use project with mixed commercial and residential, that, that's going to follow to this category, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so if a commercial building has one small unit on the top of their building, do they then get fast tracked for approval?
Let's see, under, so it has, it has to be, it has to be a project with two or more units and under Housing Accountability Act, there is no fast tracking. This is not about a, this is not about an accelerated or streamlined process. The Housing Accountability Act is about the, the basis to reduce density of projects or deny projects and a reliance on subjective requirements to modify the design of the project. So I guess to go back to your original question, you know, SB 35 requires a certain percentage of the floor area to be residential to qualify for streamlined review. Housing Accountability Act really only talks about multiple units as being applicable to the HAA. So if it's, you know, a primarily commercial with two multi-family units, I would say the HAA is applicable.
So is the goal here to revise our zoning standards so the SB 35 criteria would apply throughout the whole city just to speed up the process?
No, I don't think so. It could be. There are some cities who want to broaden the applica, who want to further streamline housing projects outside of the purview of SB 35, but that's not at all what Capitola is intending with this.
Okay. And what about, what about cities that really don't want to do this, that want to place the priority on protecting the character of their community like Ojai and Carmel? What are they doing?
I think that the cities that are most interested in protecting the character of their communities are transitioning from subjective requirements to objective standards.
Go ahead, Katie, or is that Courtney?
So my, my concern is that probably the biggest project that's going to happen in Capitola is the Capitola Mall. I mean, we've all seen that. And that's basically a mixed use project that is not in the coastal zone. And so I'm under the impression that we are adopting these new standards, objective standards, so that when they come in with a project, the city will have some basis to talk about the kind of density that's going to be there, the number of units. I mean, I'm making the assumption that 50% of their units are not going to be affordable so they're not going to do SB 35, but, but we need to have something in place so that, you know, the community can get involved in deciding what should happen on that cover. So this will do that?
Are you saying, Susan, that if we have objective standards that we're developing now, that it'd be easier to meet that condition number one there on the screen and show that it would have an adverse impact? So we would be entitled to deny the project or condition it?
Well, yeah, I'm, I'm, yes, I'm not interested in denying the project, but I am interested in the city putting itself in a place where it would have some ability to, you know, talk about the amount of density and the size of the building and the way I understand it right now, the, our language is fairly objective, particularly for that parcel of weight.
But the standard here is that adverse impact on public health and safety. So do objective standards help us address that stand, that test? Ben?
No.
So I'm, I'm having trouble seeing the connection between this, the SB 330, as we call it, and the objective standards in helping us control projects that, as Susan was mentioning.
So if, if, if a proposed, let's say a proposed multi-family project- So, if, if, if a proposed, let's say a proposed multifamily project, let's say a multifamily project is proposed in the multifamily residential zone, the existing objective standards in that zone are very limited in Capitola. It's really just height, step-back, parking, and then some sort of minor things like maintenance. Limit, no design, no site design standards. So, if that project were proposed and, and it's not an SB 35 project, it's just, it's just a, it's just a regular application, there, the Housing Accountability Act raises questions about the city's ability to rely on its subjective requirements to require modifications to the design of the project. I think it's a gray area, but there are some aggressive developers out there who are taking an interpretation of the Housing Accountability Act and saying, "You cannot use your subjective requirements to require a modification to the design of my project if I'm needing the objective standards."
But that has nothing to do with density?
No.
If the Bay Area says you can't reduce the density, so how do they use that to knock down the subjective requirement?
So, we're, we're sort of conflating the Housing Accountability Act and SB 33 a little bit. SB 33 modified the Housing Accountability Act, but it also included some additional language about sort of limitations on what cities can do with projects. So, you sort of, you kind of, at least in my mind, I look at the Housing Accountability Act and SB 33, SB 33 together kind of as one package. And so, I think getting back to what I was saying before, is that, is that you can have, you can have an applicant come forward, and these things are going to be litigated eventually because it is a gray area. You have applicants come forward and say, "Look, I'm complying with all of, all of these objective standards, and the language in SB 33 is, is, limits the city's ability to use subjective requirements to require a modification to the design of the project because I'm needing all the objective standards. You need, you need to approve it the way I want it."
I don't see where it says that on your screens here. Last bullet. And with the last bullet, yes, it says no new design standards.
So, I guess, you know, the, the, and I'll tell you, the city, Capitola's City Attorney, here's the advice that the city attorney has given, given us on this, which actually is sort of good for Capitola. It's not the only opinion I've heard on it. But what the city attorney has said is that if you get, if you get a proposed multifamily project and, and you don't, you don't like the design, but it complies with all the objective standards, you have to approve it, you have to approve it, but you can condition the approval on design modifications that reflect your subjective requirements. That's, that's, that's the advice that we received. And it's gonna, it's gonna, if the project complies with the objective standards, you must approve.
But you can...
But you can, but you can, but you can condition that approval on modifications to the design. And to me, that's messy. To me, that's messy, and to me, it's preferable to have the most important design standards stated as an objective standard.
And Ben, if I, can, can I add one comment? So, typically in our planning commission meetings, one of the, the main review items are mass and scale and compatibility. So, if we did have a new housing project that came in and in the planning commission's review, they were not satisfied with the compatibility of the project or the mass and scale, we could not ask them to remove a number of units because that would be decreasing the density, and you would have to approve the project with conditions to try to achieve your objectives and get it to a compatible state. But by adopting objective design standards, you can build in some of those, you can build this in through architectural standards to make sure that a building, you know, the mass and scale and differentiation and compatibility standards are built into these objective standards by, you know, looking at the built environment in Capitola. We'll have to study what's out there and what makes something compatible and what is the correct mass and scale of a project. So, it's, it will be a little bit tricky, and one thing I appreciate about our code is the flexibility that's built into it currently. So, this trend towards objective standards is a little bit more difficult because we don't want to end up with a cookie cutter build-out in Capitola by being too prescriptive in our objective standards. So, I think, Ben, in his approach, we've had some great conversations about actually how this would impact, I appreciate Commissioner Westman and Commissioner Newman's comments about the mall and how this would impact those larger projects. You know, with the mall, I think we'll be seeing definitely a development agreement because of the, just how large the mall is and how many, there's other things that have to come into agreement that can only happen through a development agreement for that project. So, this is really thinking about those, you know, multifamily parcels throughout town and mixed-use, maybe smaller projects than the mall, but we will be keeping an eye on that as we move forward with the objective standards too, knowing that, how they would be applied to a larger, but...
I'm just curious if we can develop some design criteria and offer several different options of design criteria. Sounds like we almost have to design the buildings ourselves if we're going to get what we want.
And why don't we have A, B, and C plans and they can pick?
Yeah.
So, can we go back two slides? I saw the question two slides ago. There you go. So, we had a project come before the planning commission that went all the way to the city council last year, where up on Depot Hill, we had a multi-unit house or development that was not zoned multi-unit. So, the guy came in and said, "Okay, I'm going to reduce the number of units and make it compliant with the code the way it reads." So, that eventually got approved, and he then reduced the density of the housing up on Depot Hill from like, what, four apartments or down to three or something like that. Were we potentially violating the HAA when we approved that?
So, was this proposed new construction?
Yes. It was basically, or a massive remodel. So, it was an existing unit that was effectively torn down, and I think it's still in the process of being rebuilt.
It was a major remodel.
Yeah. I don't, I don't think the HAA applies in that circumstance.
Because it's not a new build?
Yeah, because there, I think the reduction in units of an existing building as part of a remodel does not fall under the HAA.
Good. Thanks.
And it was voluntary.
I'd like to have a final word on this before we move on, because that I, having these objective standards sounds like it's putting us in line with the modern trends and we're going to do it anyway, and we've allocated the funds and got some advantages. But I got to tell you, the application of this to these existing laws is really muddled in my mind, and I'm used to looking at things like this.
Yeah. And I think it's a threat to the character of our community.
And I didn't, I didn't quite, I don't, I didn't quite package it, though.
I think that these laws and the application of these laws is very confusing, muddled.
I do not disagree.
Okay. Ben, would you like to continue or do we have more?
I would love to continue. Let's see, the other aspect of state law that I think we need to keep in mind is the beloved regional housing needs allocation. And so, Capitola, you know, has, has a number of units that it needs to plan for and demonstrate adequate sites to accommodate, and the current planning period for the RENA is 2015 to 2023, and Capitola is required to accommodate 143 units during this planning period at different affordability levels. And Capitola has also needed to report to the state on progress towards meeting this RENA. And so, this slide is showing up-to-date information on the number of permits that have been issued for housing within this planning period. So, there's been only one moderate income, one, I'm sorry, one affordable unit. All the other units have been above moderate, and only one of those units, if I understand correctly, has been multifamily, which actually doesn't make sense at all because one, how can one unit be multifamily? Katie, can you, can you clarify that for me?
Sure. So, I just want to be clear that this is through 2019. I have not added the 2020 numbers yet. So, there was a four-plex that we just issued, I think we just issued the building permit on or we're about to up the street here in Cap, on Cap Ave. These numbers reflect the moderate income is the new Terra Court property behind Osh. Otherwise, all, the rest of our properties have been just above moderate income, and there, when you have a tear-down rebuild, it does not count towards this calculation. So, there was a duplex that was built across the street during this time on Capitola Avenue. I'm trying to recall our multifamilies, but we've had very few. The big project was the Terra Commons project behind Osh, which introduced 13 units, I believe, to Capitola, one of which was the moderate income. So, I can bring the planning commission more information on exactly, you know, which projects are tied to this. I have all of that on file, but offhand, I'm not remembering, other than the duplex across the street, any other multifamilies that have been approv, well, approvals, definitely. There was the other four-plex up the street on Cap Ave that's been approved, but it's just getting its permits now, so that will be effective and be in our count for the 2021 RENA numbers. Because it's, they calculate when the, when the approvals went through planning commission, and then the numbers take effect upon building permit issuance.
And so, the reason this is relevant to this project is, is Capitola and all other cities in the Anbog region are expecting a dramatic increase in RENA for the next planning period. I think feedback from Heather Adams in Anbog is that, you know, two to three times the RENA for the next planning period compared to this number is sort of what's expected. And that would be consistent with the Abog region in San Francisco, that would be consistent with the GAG region in Southern California, and it would be consistent with San Luis Obispo County, which is their own little planning county down there who has their RENA for this new planning period already. So, I think the reason that this is relevant to the project is that Capitola can expect a significantly larger RENA for the next planning period, likely with the need to identify new sites that allow multifamily housing. So, there'll be, the state will require an increased number of sites in Capitola that allow multifamily housing. And also, it's possible that sites that were identified in the existing housing element to accommodate multifamily housing may not be able to be reused in the new planning period because there were, there were some changes to state housing on this law recently that says, you know, if you have sites that previously were identified and they weren't developed, well, you may not be able to use them in your new housing element because the fact that they weren't developed indicates that there's something about it that makes it sort of infeasible to develop. It's, it's, I tell you, it's a possibility, it's not a certainty, but it's something that will be on the table for the next housing element update. So, I think that, that the take-home on this is that there will be a dramatically larger RENA in the future. There will likely be the need to rezone sites and identify new sites that allow for multifamily housing, and existing sites that have been used in your housing elements that satisfy your RENA may not be able to continue to be used unless there's a change to the underlying zoning strategy. And so, I think for, for me, what that speaks to is the increased need for the protection that comes from improved and more robust objective standards for multifamily housing.
Is that the end of the presentation, Matt, or we've still got more?
Well, you know, I've got more. I was, I was, I was intending to, to kind of talk through the recommended approach to the objective standards because in addition to the feedback that we've received, heard already tonight, we wanted to get any additional feedback that you have on sort of the approach that we are recommending through the floor. And if the planning commission is willing, I'm prepared to sort of walk through that for you.
What's the commission's pleasure?
I'm willing.
Yes. All right.
Okay. So, so one of the things we did was we looked at what the existing objective standards are, kind of as an exercise to understand, well, what are the existing objective, objective standards, given, given everything that we've talked about already, so that the city must approve an SB 35 project if it's consistent with these standards, and then the Housing Accountability Act in SB 30 may limit the city's ability to require changes to a project if it complies with these objective standards. So, in the memo, there's this table that shows what the existing objective standards are for the different zoning districts where multifamily projects are developed. And in, in the, in the mixed-use districts, so in the village, there's a number of building and site design standards related to urban design. And when we did the zoning code update, one of the things that we did is we looked at the village design plan, and we translated a lot of those previous design guidelines into objective standards. So, they're, they're in there already. they're, they're in there already. What, what, what Capitola doesn't really have are design standards for multifamily development in the multifamily sector. So gray in the box means that there's nothing that gets that position. There's, so, so when Katie and I looked at this together, we found this to be instructive in terms of where the gaps are in the city's objective standards for multifamily mixed-use development. For the village, it's pretty good. For the multifamily zone, much more limited. And the other thing that we did is we looked at what the city's existing subjective requirements are for multifamily mixed-use development, and so these projects are required, are subject to a discretionary review process, requiring a design review permit, and in some cases, a conditional use permit, and as you know, when a design review project goes in front of you, you look at that project relative to the city's design review criteria, and require modifications to the design of the project as needed to achieve complete compliance with the design review criteria. So for an FD 35 project, the city cannot impose or enforce compliance with any of these subjective requirements, and for any project, any multi-unit project throughout the city, under the Housing Accountability Act and FD 30, as we talked about before, the city can't require any modifications to the project in a manner that would disallow or reduce the design review requirement. So, so based on that, we, we, Katie and I put together this approach to these objective standards, and you know, one thing I, I do want to say is that I don't think Katie or I, either Katie nor I, neither Katie nor I are, is envisioning anything terribly dramatic. We're not envisioning this entirely new set of detailed architectural standards that's going to completely change the zoning regulation. We're seeing this more as sort of a targeted surgical addition to the existing requirements. You know, the intent, the state's intent behind all of this is to facilitate the production of additional housing, which I think Capitola is generally supportive of, and imposing a lot of new and onerous, onerous and burdensome requirements would conflict with that overarching objective. So I think one of our guiding principles in all of this is to keep in mind the underlying purpose, which is to accommodate high-quality multifamily housing that's going to be well-received by the community, and not to impose a lot of additional burdensome requirements. So I think we're seeing this as a very focused and targeted effort. So in the, in the memo, it sort of walked through the recommended approach. Other cities are doing this too. Palo Alto has been a city that's been doing this early on. They've followed a similar process to what we're envisioning. I think their end result is very, very different from what Capitola would do. They're being very prescriptive in terms of design standards, but they're, they're an example in other cities.
Ben, 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 if you could just hold it right there, because I think that's what Capitola needs to do as one commissioner. I think we need, I think we need to be very strict on our design standards, because I think the most important thing to this community is protecting the character, and without strict design standards, we can't do that over a period of time.
Okay, okay, that's, that's, that's good to hear, so I'll, I'll, I won't presume what the end product would look like. Okay, so another thing I wanted to, I wanted to show a few photos of existing multifamily development in Capitola. Here's the Bayou and the senior apartments, here's an older project, 88 Park, here's a 12th Park, here's the multifamily in 17, on 47th Street, here's the mixed-use project on 41st Street, and so I'm showing these images because it's going to be very important to look at recent development in Capitola, existing multifamily development in Capitola, and think about the things that we like and what we don't like, what could have been better, what's important, and that's very instructive for us as we think about what we want to codify as objective standards for multifamily mixed-use development. We can also look at recent development in Santa Cruz that has seen a little bit more multifamily development. My understanding is that Santa Cruz, city of Santa Cruz is actually going through a similar process as Capitola in terms of preparing new objective standards, but I think that there's some examples of recent development in Santa Cruz, as well as other communities in Santa Cruz County and the larger regions, that's sort of instructive in terms of good urban design, and we'll be looking at this in more detail as we progress with, with the project.
Question, this is Commissioner Wilk, are you requesting or inviting individual commissioners to provide input on what these standards might be, say, oh, I think this is a good setback, or a second-story setback, something like that, or are you just looking to us just to review what you're doing and not our heads?
You know, I think it's, it's definitely not just not your head, you know, we, we, fully expect and hope for the Planning Commissioner, the Planning Commission to provide substantive comments on the standards themselves as we're working on. I think tonight is an opportunity to introduce the project, sort of explain what we're doing, get any preliminary feedback that you have on it, and then at, at a future meeting, that's when we'll sort of dig into the weeds and sort of talk more about the objectives.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'll, I'll try to get through the rest of this relatively quickly, because I know that this has been going on for a while, and it, the memo kind of outlines our recommended approach, and the first, the first part of it is to look at the city's existing design review criteria, and to think about which of these should be translated into new objective standards. And so we've identified the following existing design review criteria, criteria as, you know, possible criteria to translate them to new standards. So we, we intend to look at these more closely and think about, okay, how could the existing subjective requirements related to neighborhood compatibility be translated into a new objective standard? The second aspect of our recommended approach is to look at all of the city's existing subjective requirements, not just the design review criteria, and to think about if there are any of those that are particularly important that for an FD 35 project, we'd want to have as a mandatory standard, or for any multi-unit project in the city, we just want to have that as an objective standard in light of Housing Accountability Act and FD 30's requirements. So we intend to review all of the existing subjective requirements which were attached in the staff report, and think about which ones, which, which of those, if any, should be considered for translation into an objective standard. The, the third aspect of our recommended approach is to really look for opportunities to provide options to achieve objectives. As Katie was mentioning, that a cookie-cutter approach for a city like Capitola is not appropriate, and you have different areas with unique design characters, you have different types of projects that will need to be approached in different ways, depending on the building type, the size of the project, unique site constraints, so we want flexibility, we want to encourage creativity, and, and one way to do that within the objective standard framework is to provide options. So you might identify an objective, such as, you know, providing for a pedestrian-friendly street space, and then provide options for projects to meet that objective. There might be some standards where options are not appropriate or desirable, but I think our, our, one of our guiding principles is to, you know, really look for opportunities to provide options to encourage flexibility and creativity. And then the fourth part of the recommended approach is to allow for an applicant to request deviation from, deviation from standards. So a project that's requesting streamlined approval under FD 35, they cannot deviate. If they deviate, they lose FD 35, streamlining, and they would just have to go through the city's normal process. But that's not the case for other multi-unit projects, they need to comply with the standards, but we do think that there needs to be a mechanism for a project to request a deviation from the standard. They could do that with our recommended approach, with the Planning Commission approval, and we're thinking of something along the lines of, you know, if the project, the Planning Commission can approve the deviation if the project achieves the intent of the standard to the extent possible, and there are unique circumstances on the property. This is similar to the way that you handle deviations to design standards from ADU, or ADUs, so it wouldn't be a, it wouldn't be a new concept for Capitola.
I disagree with the variance, correct?
Well, you can word it any way you want.
Yeah.
I think we're intending it to be sort of a lower threshold than a variance, but I think one of, one of the questions for the city will be, well, how difficult do you want it to be to grant a, to grant deviation? Do you want to make it really easy to approve a deviation, or do you want to make it really hard to approve a deviation? That will be a policy decision that we'll be able to make. Okay, and the very last thing, and then, then, then I am done, is a question about sort of where these standards are located. There are cities who will, who will adopt objective standards by resolution, they will not be, they are not part of the city's municipal code, but they have the effect of law. That's not what we're recommending, we think it makes more sense for these standards to be located in the zoning code, similar to all of the other development and design standards, they're all together in one place, we think that's better for everyone. We also think that we're going to be adding new standards within the individual zoning district, because the design issues are so different in these different zoning districts, in your multifamily district compared to your mixed-use neighborhood district. We, we anticipate it will make the most sense to sort of, in a targeted and surgical way, add new standards to the individual zoning district. Another option is to have an entirely new chapter within the zoning code called Objective Standards for Multifamily Mixed-Use Development, that would apply generally to all zoning districts, and would live in one chapter within the zoning code. We don't think that that's what we're going to want to do, because we think that the individual standards are going to vary considerably from district to district. So that, that sort of is our recommended approach. The next step is we're going to have a similar study session with the city council, I have it in my calendar, that's going to happen on February 25th, Katie can confirm if that's really the case, and then we'll get feedback from the council, and then we'll start having some more conversations with project stakeholders, designers, property owners, residents, to start getting some more detailed feedback, and then we'll begin the process of drafting some of these standards, coming back to the Planning Commission, talking about them, making modifications based on your comments and recommendations, and then taking it to the city council for review and adoption by some work.
Okay, thank you, Ben. Very comprehensive and very unnerving.
I'm gonna tell you.
Any commission comment?
Yeah, I'd like to make a closing comment, this is Commissioner Wilk. And that is, I, I appreciate Katie and Ben's effort on this, and, and I think this is a great idea to try to create objective standards and minimize those subjective standards, so that when oftentimes Commissioner Ruth and I are on opposite ends of a, of a, of an issue with regards to design standards, and with some objective standards, maybe they're very prescriptive, maybe they're not, but with some objective standards, we, we maybe we won't be in, in conflict so much.
I agree, and that's what I'd like to see, is a strong emphasis on design standards.
Yeah, and I don't disagree with that.
Yeah. Oh, Ed?
Yeah, I, I would also like to say that it's a very impressive, uh, presentation. I do think that new standards should be integrated into the existing code, because it makes it much more user-friendly, and if you have to bounce around with the different add-on sections that enters, interact and conflict and intersect and makes it hard for the consumer, the public, or even planning commissioners at times, so the more you can integrate it, the better.
Thank you, Ed. Courtney, any comments?
Uh, none at this time, but I agree with Commissioner Niven.
Commissioner Westman, any comments?
No, I'm looking forward to seeing what they come up with. I do think that we have, we do have some good design guidelines in the village in the zoning ordinance, and that's because we integrated the design review standards that we have and made it part of the zoning ordinance, so I look forward to seeing what we can do in the multifamily zone.
Thank you, Susan.
Presentation.
Thank you. Ben, thank you, that was very interesting, and thank you, Katie. So let's move on to the director's report.
Very good, and I just want to add one thing for, kudos to Ben, he's already reached out to our coastal commission, and we have informed them of our intent to move forward with objective design standards, and enlightened them on all the new state laws regarding these and how they fit in with the coastal, so proactive, and he's been around the block with us before, so taking all the necessary steps. Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Hey, Ed. Would you like to, or Katie?
If, if Ben could stop sharing his presentation, I can give a community development director a really good.
Okay, yes, I have a director's report this evening, Matt is pulling up my presentation for me, I wanted to give-
Ben, Ben's screen is still shared, is it, is it something else?
There we go. Okay. Okay, I, I wanted to bring you up to date on eviction protections and also just COVID-related response to housing, and I also thought it was important to bring you up to date on recent efforts with the CDVG grant money. SB 91 was passed by the governor on January 28th, it extends key tenant and property owner protection provisions that were originally provided through AB 3088. It includes debt treatment and civil procedures in SB 91, and it appropriates $1.5 billion in state rental assistance. Next slide, please. So eviction protections that have been brought into this new law is that they now extend through June 30th, 2021, so there was a pending deadline for, I think it was March, I want to say, and so that has been extended through June 30th, 2021. It utilizes the same eligibility, there has to be a declaration of a financial hardship, 25% payment of monthly rent has to be paid from the tenant to the property owner, and debt will still accrue, but cannot be the grounds for eviction to tenants, and it provides additional eviction and debt protection measures for COVID-19 impacted tenants. Next slide, please. So landlord and homeowner- So landlord and homeowner protections within the new legislation is, it extends to September 1st, 2021, for consumer protection, for property owners and landlords impacted by COVID-19, whose recent requests for mortgage forbearance are denied. So detailed explanation from lenders are required, also a 21 days to cure any incorrect information on the request. The state-level protections supplement available federal mortgage forbearance options. Next slide, please. And rental assistance, the program is, has been set up to help the renters as well as the property owners. So the program focuses on stabilized low-income households through the payment of rental in arrears to landlords. So the eligibility for each household, at or below, so it's our low and very low incomes, at 80, 80% AMI, to those under 50% area median income. Participating landlords will be compensated 80% of the unpaid rent from April 1st, 2020 through March 31st, 2021. So whole year, except the, as payment in full for all rental debt for that period. So they could collect 80% of that rent through the state program. And as a reminder, the, the rentee, the person who's renting pays up to 25%. The landlord chooses, if the, if a landlord chooses not to participate, eligible households can still pay and receive 25% of back rent owed for the covered period. So if their landlord chooses not to proceed, the person in the rental can apply and get up to 25% back rent owed. Next slide, Matt? So the great news locally is that the county of Santa Cruz just received $8.1 million for rental assistance, and this will be applied to the municipalities within the county as well. And following the news of the $8 million, about a week later, they were, they were notified that the state of California is going to match those dollars with, so all in all, there'll be a little over $16 million in rental assistance within our county. The state is being very aggressive in setting up a new system to roll out these funds, and it's slated for March 15th. So hopefully, we'll be seeing some economic impacts from this distribution of funds. And so that's my update on eviction, moratorium and the extension there. Next, I wanted to bring you up to date on CDBG grant money. This is the grant money that we, as the City of Capitola, receive, it's actually FUD mon, sorry, HUD money. I'm going to take this off. It's HUD, HUD money at the federal level that comes through the state HCD and is filtered down to the city. In this next round, they've combined, at first, they thought they'd do three rounds of grant money. In the next round, they've combined two, the round two and round three. So we're getting a much larger amount this time, $330,000. The city council, I brought this to them at their last meeting on January 28th, and they provided direction. They'd like to, it's very limited this time. If you recall, in the first round, they were able to pick up to three different programs to fund dollars to. In this next round, because of, to keep it simple, I think, and get money out, they said if you, if you allocated money to three different programs in the first round, you're allowed to send additional funds to those three programs, and you can create one new fund. The city council really wanted to fund small businesses, or businesses in general, in that first round, but it was set up as loans and not grant money. They've since changed the regulations, and they're allowing grants. So within this next round, they're going to give $15,000 to each of the food assistance programs that were funded in the first round, and then utilize the remainder of the money for business grants. And one exciting factor that just came about in the past week is that we're making a new partnership with our local SBDC office. They're going to administer these grants, so take on a new role for them. So we should be able to fund 32 business grants, and SBDC has agreed to, because the need is so great, they're waiving their typical administrative cost. And that allowed us, originally, we thought we could fund 25 businesses, but it's now allowing us to do 32, because they're waiving that, their administrative costs. So very exciting. The city council is going to be looking at a resolution at their next hearing. And I will say, it's been a moving target. Every time we think we have something ironed out, something else comes up. For instance, we contributed $20,000 in rental assistance in CV1. Because of the new money that's come through the treasury at the federal level that's funding this new rental assistance program, we may have to make tweaks to our original allocation of $20,000 for rental assistance, because you can't, they're always cautious of double, funds getting doubled and almost like double-dipping into funds. So we're anticipating some modifications to our CV1 grant still, and it is a moving target. But exciting news that that money is coming down for rental assistance, for our entire county, and then locally for businesses and food assistance. So those are my updates this evening, and thank you all. Any questions?
Katie, for them? Our last item is Commission Communications. Does anyone have anything to add tonight? See a lot of shaking hands? If not, okay, then we will adjourn to our next meeting in March.
See you, Ben.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Goodbye.